It is 6:05. We're bringing November 15th City of Angels meeting to order. Roll call, please.
We are actually going to start with the oath of office first.
Oh, it was? I'm looking.
Yes. For the reelected elected officials. I ask that you stand right to the right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
I, Karen Charada.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I.
Or affirm that I.
Will support and defend.
Will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the.
And the Constitution of the.
State of California.
State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely without any.
Freely without any.
Mental reservation.
Mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for everybody running. It was awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So number one was oath of office. Number two, roll called now.
Mayor Berlio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunden.
Present.
Councilmember Tiscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Charado.
Present.
Staff is present.
Okay. Next to that, item number three, pledge of allegiance. All rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is item number four, report out of closed session. Sorry. Direction was given to staff. Item number five is approval of the amended agenda. Any member of the public, staff, would like to change anything? Say so now, or I would look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May disapprove, same sign. Five votes. Item number six is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. I'll start in the House first. Anybody in the House that has any public comment? Hearing none. Rose, how about online?
Any online public comment? No.
Okay. I will close public comment and move on to item number seven, which is consent agenda A and B. Is there anybody of the public, staff, or council that would like to pull items A or B?
The minutes for you, since you weren't there.
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will, I will pull A, just because I wasn't here. So I'll look for a motion for item B to start.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May disapprove, same sign. Oh. And then item A, I just don't want to vote because I was not there.
All motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I abstain? Okay. Item eight, regular agenda. Item A, public hearing. Second hearing to consider adoption of ordinance 533, updating the city building codes, chapter 15 dot 04 of the City of Angels Municipal Code AMC, to remove section inconsistent with the California building codes. Adopt the 2022 California Building Codes, effective January 1st, 2023, and add the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and its 2024 update. Amy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, in order to follow our general plan and provide safe and adequate housing, we need to update our building codes accordingly. And you introduced this at your last meeting, and it will be a second reading, public hearing, and we would recommend that you adopt these states' updates to the state building code. Be happy to answer any questions.
Staff question? Council questions?
Where are these building codes available to our local contractors? These updates, I was going to mention.
We are actually through CSG. They are purchasing an update, and we will have them available online.
So will we post it, like, on our link on our website or something?
If they are allowed to, based upon the contract. If not, they can contact us, and we can go over them with them or print out a hard copy for them if they have any questions.
Because there's always a learning curve for the contractors that need to learn the things.
Contractors and the building inspector.
And everybody.
All learned together.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Anybody in the building first? Rose, online?
Any online public comment to item 7A?
Hearing none, seeing none. I will close public hearing. And bring it back if you may have any further questions, staff or council. If not, I would consider adopting ordinance, a motion to adopt ordinance 533, updating the city building codes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May disapprove, same sign. Item 7B, approve resolution number 2279, awarding a contract and authorizing the city administrator to execute said contract, preparing the all-hazard planning codes updates. Amy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this has been an ongoing FEMA application that we had submitted because.
Eight, sorry.
Whoops, excuse me. CalOES is actually providing, implementing the grant for us. Our codes are pretty outdated, as you know. We still have basically duck and cover for emergency response in our codes from 1950s, so it's time to do some updating. And we have, in fact, sent out an RF request for bids, in which 33 firms looked at it. Twenty of them downloaded it. Two of them attended a pre-construction, or that pre-bid meeting, and one proposed. And that was InterWest, and it's a pretty straightforward job. It's basically borrowing from others, if you will, just to update our codes, to get them into the 20th century. It's more, it's sort of busy work to a certain extent that we just don't have staff time to do. And staff recommends that you do go ahead and hire InterWest. They came in at $55,000 with a $5,000 contingency, and we had budgeted $60,000, which we will get in the grant. Staff will be overseeing them as a committee, and we would ask that if you have anybody on city council who would like to participate on the steering committee, that you discuss that amongst yourselves and let us know who you would like to have on that committee to oversee these updates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the soft match being $20,000.
Yes.
Why is that so much? I mean, that's a third of the whole project cost.
Um, they require that amount in order to get this particular grant. They require a soft match.
Yeah, 35% match. So instead of us paying it, in essence, we're going to have internal staff working on it?
We would be conducting.
What the soft means, right?
Yeah. We would be conducting staff review.
Yeah.
If we weren't writing them ourselves, we'd be happy to do staff reviews anyway, so.
But is this a $60,000 grant?
And some of these are fairly important. Things like making sure we have house numbers on each house, so that when you respond, making sure your addresses are posted, so that the fire department can see them. We do not have grading ordinance in the city. We don't have any guidelines for people to do grading, erosion control. We need to have those standards established. It helps when somebody comes in with an application. If we already have those standards, they get through the process that much faster. We can tell them exactly what it is they need to do. There's predictability.
Council questions, staff questions?
This is just something that gets done one time, and then it's kind of law?
It gets done and implemented. I mean, this will be, most of what is done here will appear as conditions of project approval going forward, as well as updating things like vegetation management and making sure that we've complied with clearing, and we spell those out a little more precisely for people to follow. And heritage roads are addressed in here. You know how we have some really narrow roads? Talking about looking at that and looking at some solutions, like, maybe we just park on one side, and maybe we don't park at all in a few places, so that emergency vehicles can get in and out. There's some pretty good stuff here.
That's good. That's important. Help is down. Okay.
So I do have a question, same kind of thing. On the $20,000 that we have to come up with, in, I mean, it'll be staff time, but that's still time that's going to have to be billed to this, correct? You can't pull it out of the water fund or super fund or anything else.
So it's already costs that we, that's already included in that?
So there's going to be no budget adjustment, no anything for it? It's already in? Let me answer.
Yeah, I was just a little confused, I guess, with the soft.
What's the timeline for this?
They have until 2024. Yeah, June of 2024.
So it'll go different phases.
It looks like they, they wanted our designated person by January, is that right? Um, the council, is that it? They wanted for the meetings?
Um, yeah, if you could, that would be great. If not, the work will not end, because by the time we get them contracted inside, we can conceivably be.
I think we get through all of it. Yeah. Committees.
We will need committees, so. So can we, there's a question. Can we put this onto the committees that we will all choose from and go over again at the first year? Unless we have to, and I can, or one of us can step in if we have to, I guess, prior? But either you said you were on it, Amy's on it, right?
Fire department's on it.
Fire department, I forget.
Yeah.
So there's already staff on.
We will likely have a kickoff meeting, perhaps, by the time you meet again, so you'll have time before we have an actual steering committee meeting to start reviewing stuff.
Okay.
You'll have.
Does that work? Okay. So there's direction on that. We need to approve a resolution of 2279.
Public comment?
What's that?
Did you do public?
Oh, not yet. Um, any public comment? Thank you. Online public comment?
No.
Okay. There's no other questions, then I would look to approve resolution 2279.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same sign? Okay. And then can I go back in time? Since it did change, and I'm sorry, I numbered mine at the top, so I called item 7A, actually should have been 8A.
Am I, my thing online is wrong, too?
Oh, is it?
The only thing I remember.
I know, I just go, I numbered mine on the top of the page, so. Can I go back in time real quick to 8A? And can I open the public hearing and close the public hearing again? Or do I not need to do that?
You should be fine.
We're fine?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need, you don't need any motion on that one?
No.
No. I'm just going to change this to P.
It just helps the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so next we'll move on to item 8C. City council acceptance and approval of resolution 2284, budget adjustment for $100,000 grant, awarded to this Angels Camp Police Department from a private nonprofit organization, Wings of Freedom Foundation. Scott Ellis, Chief of Police, come on up.
Evening, Mayor, council. A couple of months ago, I was approached by a board member, a couple of board members from the Wings of Freedom Foundation, solicit, not really soliciting, but asking if we had any departmental needs and making a statement, they're willing to make a donation to the police department. I put together a list of potential needs of the department, supplied it to them, they approved the purchase of several items as what they, on their terms, what they wanted to fund us for. And a couple, about a month ago, I met with the board members in person, and they handed me a check for $100,000 to make those specific purchases. Those purchases are for a new training school car, transport car for staff, some ballistic helmets for patrol. Our current ballistic helmets are probably from the 90s that we have, and then also funds for, to continue our improvements out of our range at the spray fields. So in front of you in the, in the document, there's also a budget adjustment showing where those funds would be going, and just recommending approval of the acceptance of the donation, along with the budget adjustment for the expenditures for the projects identified.
Any staff questions, council questions to Scott? Any public comment? I'll open it up in the House. Rose, online?
None.
Just a quick comment. Although number here tonight, I just wanted to put out a big thank you to the Wings of Freedom Foundation for this donation. Not something, weekend every day, not something I expected for sure as they approached us, wasn't solicited by us. So just a thank you to them, I wanted to get on record.
And that's, I would love to go on record and say thank you very much. And thank you to you on putting the list together on the stuff you need, and Wings of Freedom, hats off to you guys. That's an amazing, wherever you guys are at, that's an amazing thing they're doing for the City of Angels.
Yeah, we did, Scott. We, Jen and I did attend the Mark Twain.
Yeah.
Event, hospital, and Pat Higgins was there. So I did thank her individually for, for support of the police department.
So what happens if we are under budget in any of these projects, Scott? If we were to be under budget on the, the safety equipment or something, do we get to use it in a different way, or do we have to kind of stay within another guideline?
We have to stay within the guidelines that were in, that was laid out for them, and there's an agreement, a grant agreement, that says this is how we were going to spend the money. If there's, if there's leftover, I think as long as we stay within the realms of those three projects.
Safety equipment.
Yeah, that there's, you know, there's not going to be, there's no issue. The range, leftover ranges, there's lots of moving pieces to that one, and I mean, I could have $6 million and probably, you know, not spend it all.
Right.
Barely be able to spend it all, so I don't think spending that money is going to be an issue, and there won't be any bleed over.
Cool.
Good. Thank you.
So I would look for a motion to accept and approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else disapprove, same sign? Okay. Item 8D, public hearing. Second hearing to discuss the California State Mended Water Shortage Contingency Plan, impacting water use and measures during water shortage, conditions in the City of Angels, and approve resolution 2285. Rebecca.
So this came to council at the last meeting. The state is requiring small utility agencies, small water suppliers, to approve a drought contingency plan. We do have an ordinance that specifies what to do in an emergency, but there are all sorts of different tiers with regards to what would constitute us having to restrict water. So this embodies not just emergency or catastrophic issues, but also different triggers that would happen locally or at the state level that would require us to have to start curtailing water use for our residents and businesses. So same, same information as what was prepared last time. The state was gracious enough to kind of give us a template, so it made it a lot easier for people to put it together. And it's been out there for the public to chime in on if they had any issues, and we're ready to go ahead and recover.
Council questions? Staff questions? For anybody?
Has there been a lot of outreach? I mean, has a lot of questions, or anybody?
Now, more, mainly, the calls that I get is, why aren't you forcing people to stop using water?
Right.
And we aren't at that level right now, so.
Right. Okay. I will open the public hearing. Anybody in the House here? Public comment? Public hearing? Rose, online?
None.
Okay. Then I will close public hearing and look for the approval of resolution 2285.
I will make the motion to approve resolution 2285.
Okay. I will second motion 2285. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same sign?
I'm off.
Item 8E, approve resolution 2280, amending the Dewberry contract in the amount of 209, 209920 for construction's management, management due to the Murphy's Grade Road performance period being extended by 152 days. Rebecca.
Um, okay. So the Murphy's Grade Road sidewalk infill project would, has been a project that has just, seems like it was never renewed. A lot of residential complaints. Council saw what was happening, I saw, everyone saw what was happening. And so it was supposed to be an 80-day project. There's supposed to be 80 working days. And that 80 turned into an additional 88, which then ultimately turned into a, a project of 238 days. So when that happened, it really created a burden on the engineering firm that was doing, which is Dewberry, which was doing our inspections, construction management, superintendence of the project. And so when they bid the original contract for services, it was based on the number of working days as per the original project. It wasn't contemplated that it was going to go to 238 days. There were a lot of issues with the project overall, where just kind of failures to communicate, where the contractor would say they were going to be here, and so do where you would show up, and the contractor would not show up. Or they would say, okay, we're going to be there at 8:00 in the morning, and Dewberry would get here at 8:00 in the morning, or 7:00 in the morning, whatever it was, and the contractor wouldn't show up until 11:00 or 12:00. So we have Dewberry sitting there, waiting for them to get there. Or Dewberry would show up, and they'd say, okay, we're going to be here until 5:00, and then they would leave at 2:00. That wasn't like a one-off thing that happened all the time. A lot of issues where work is supposed to be performing, being performed, and the sub shows up, Dewberry's there, and then the sub goes, oh, I don't have the right equipment. I don't have the right materials. Oh, I'm still waiting for X, Y, or Z. And so every time that happened, Dewberry was on site, and so it just caused their costs to basically double from what the original contract was approved for. Include both pieces, the pre-federal procurement one, plus the federally procured contract. If you pull those together, in essence, almost doubled from there. So I have not paid them, the, I have not paid them for the overages on their contract. So they have been out basically 173, almost 174,000. And I really kind of draw, drew a line in the sand and said, until the project is done, until I know that we're not incurring any additional costs on either side, I'm not comfortable bringing it to council. We also needed to work with Dewberry to move funds around on the project with, with the grant, because we needed to move money from the construction portion of the grant to the construction management portion of the grant. And so that had to happen. We've continued to have discussions with Vanguard, the contractor, because we have not needed final payment to them either. So at this point, that, those conversations are continuing, these are the costs that Dewberry has in terms of outstanding invoices that we have not paid just for appropriate record keeping, and so that we can ensure that we get full reimbursement off of the, the grant, the contract that, that is, the contract amount is short, the 29920, 35, 965, almost 36,000, was paid outside of the contract last fiscal year. So the remaining budget amendment in terms of this budget that we need to address is the 173991. And then I kind of went into the history of what had happened in terms of why there was the original task order, and then there was the federally procured contract. That all is why, when I brought the contract for engineering services this year, it's a very large contract, not to exceed amount, because they don't ever want this to happen again. The issue with the contract prior is it was a very small not to exceed amount, and if you're going to use a contract like that on federal, federal projects, where there's federal grant, federal grants, you can't exceed the amount on a contract. So that was the problem in step one with this one. So we won't be having that problem again, but at this point, this is the problem that we have today. I've had extensive conversations with Dewberry's management. We have very thorough records in terms of work, you know, no shit workdays, late workdays, early, you know, early leave workdays. All of that is very well documented. We are utilizing every penny of grant funding that we possibly can. We've already contemplated the waterline overages, which came to council earlier this year, so that's not part of this. This is just truly the Murphy's Grade infill sidewalk project issues. So what I'm asking for is an amendment of the contract itself for the 209920, and a budget amendment of the 173991, with the understanding that that is all getting fully reimbursable, that's all fully reimbursed.
Council questions? Sorry, I'm trying to process it all.
Yeah, it's kind of a lot, and I think it's actually quite disappointing, to be honest, because I feel like this, like you said, this was a nightmare for project. But in my other life, there were things that were going on that I was made aware of, and it was just kind of frustrating to hear, so. If what we have to do is this in order to move it along.
Make it go away.
Close this and be done with it, but it's still, it's disheartening.
Well, and my concern is, I know this does make this component of it go away, the Dewberry side of things, but we still have the Vanguard side of things, so.
Yes, right.
I'm, part of me wants to wonder if we should not resolve this just yet until they're, they're paralleling each other.
Well, the problem is they're two entirely distinct contracts.
Of course, of course, but they're very intertwined with ownership of them.
They're intertwined in terms of working on the project.
Yeah.
In terms of the work that was performed, that is all spelled out very clearly in Dewberry's contract. The contract with reverse to Vanguard is very clear that, that if they extend the working days, they would perform that work in a timely manner, and that the city engineer, i.e. Dewberry, would have the ability to withhold payment of, of when it's, when those additional working days are causing additional costs associated with engineering, management, or superintendence. And that's what this did. So that's really where the conversation lies with, with Vanguard on that component.
I'm kind of concerned and confused on, I mean, if, if Dewberry is the quote babysitter of the project, and you have something that is continually happening and happening, why was there not a stop? This isn't working. You not showing up time and time again, and me showing up here, why was that? I mean, it's like, it's like, in my opinion, Dewberry made a mistake. Vanguard was horrifying, but nothing was, they're not taking responsibility for this.
Well, we're almost like making money, right?
Right, but they're not taking responsibility for this and now we have to pay for this. And I just, I'm, I'm concerned with why the city is paying the full amount. Vanguard should have deducted something, Dewberry should be...
So we have not paid Vanguard.
Okay.
There is still a final payment to Vanguard that we have not paid.
Right, and we haven't paid Dewberry, but, I mean, is there any recourse in Dewberry going to Vanguard for some of this? Because essentially, they're the ones that caused the excess.
That's, that's us.
That we have to do that?
That is, that's us going through, through with Vanguard.
So I'm not comfortable giving them the money till we deal with Vanguard personally. I mean, if Vanguard doesn't pay anything, then we have to fork out for complete mismanagement of a project, is how I feel. So that's, that's my two cents.
In this, in this time, in this negotiations with these numbers that you presented to us, has Dewberry shaved off any costs based on erroneous errors and things? Like any ownership of them, have they done anything?
So, so we've had several in-person meetings and meetings, not in person, but on the phone, between Vanguard and Dewberry, the city. Dewberry is not charging us for any of that. So there is conversations with Dewberry in terms of assisting us with, you know, costs associated with how we resolve this. But that's entirely different than the work that they've performed on the project.
Already?
Already.
So this would get us current, but then there's still more, more work to be done because we still have to put the Vanguard side of everything to bed. Is Dewberry going to expect another contract or continual payment for that?
No.
And that's, that would be a bono, that would be?
That is to try to put this to bed.
To bed, okay.
And it's, in full honesty, in April, because I started second week of February, it was either kind of the latter part of March or early April, I said, we should just stop work.
Yep.
Just stop work, yeah. But by that time, then the issue is, we stop work instead of...
Oh, right, we're the ones that are stopping it.
We're the ones that are stopping it, so then, then there would be consequences.
Being made available, yeah.
There would be consequences to us.
Financial consequences.
So, yeah.
Okay, so my last question has to do with the funding. So we do have CMAC funding.
We do have CMAC funding.
For this portion, what we're looking at here tonight. Where are we at with regard to what, what have we been reimbursed for so far? Like is the invoicing, because that's done by you, Michelle?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So we invoice a little verbally in on the project.
Construction, now that's the Vanguard side.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just been for Vanguard.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not like...
And, and we have been reimbursed on Dewberry's contract up into what we've paid them.
What we can so far, perfect. So whereas up to date is we can...
So once we pay this, then we invoice such as... And we're guaranteed to get that back? That 209 would be coming through CMAC, yes.
Is there a time date on that CMAC money? Does it go away at any point or is it just guaranteed?
The timely use of funds on this, on the existing CMAC, I mean, we're, it's done. I mean, we're not, yeah.
And can we break it up? Could we pull 75 of it? And then make another payment down the road? Maybe open a whole can of worms.
Yeah. I mean, I just, do you have any idea what we're on the hook with Vanguard for possibly?
Yes.
So are we, are we getting reimbursed for that?
We're getting reimbursed for a large chunk of it, but not all of it. And so that's where the conversations with Vanguard are going. Because we would have had sufficient grant funds to pay the bulk except for the fact that they caused the Dewberry contract to go significantly higher than it did.
And there's no recourse? I, I do, okay, yeah. It's frustrating. Yeah, it's frustrating because I just feel like if I, if I am, if I'm dealing with an employee that is constantly not showing up or not, I mean, I'm just going to not keep them. I'm going to fire them or I'm going to say, hey, we're not, we're not acting like this. I'm not going to continue to give them a paycheck. And, and so I, this is a lot. I mean, 10 days, 20 days, but doubled the time.
It was the whole school year.
The whole, I mean...
It was almost the whole school year.
And there, there were a lot of reoccurring habits. You know, if, if they stiffed me and I showed up and they weren't there once, maybe twice. But what is it, first time shame on you, second time shame on you, 11 times? And, and there was no communication and there was expectation and it's just, it's a, it's a comedy of errors. Is, does our contract with Dewberry have any language about retention? Can we retain some of this payment until, you know, like not, not pay all of it at this time, but pay a portion and do a retention of, of a portion until we can get everything else rectified?
Well, at this point, we've just held them to what the total contract was. So we have not, we haven't, I have not, since I've been here, we've done anything regarding this, this project. Because we didn't have any authority to do it at all. So that's, that's where that is at the moment. And I don't know how long the conversations with Vanguard will go.
Right.
So for me, yeah, there was, there was a lot that went on. I mean, I don't know, I hold the city, we should have maybe stopped. Dewberry maybe should have stopped and Vanguard, I don't know, that's just a whole other ball of wax there. But we hit a root cellar that we'd had no clue about. There was a water pipe in the way that we had no clue about. There was all sorts of soil, there was rock, there was content, there was all sorts of other crazy stuff.
Supply chain issues.
There was also, exactly, there was all sorts of other stuff and people just not showing up or with the wrong equipment. There was, there was a ton of stuff that happened in this. That was unforeseen and, and you, and you just don't know about a root cellar in the ground. And Dewberry is our city engineer and they've done a really good job in prior things. And this is one project that went off the rails a little bit, in my opinion. So to hold that completely over their head, I don't know. Can we pay half a payment of this to now until we figure out what's going on down the rest? As a, as a, as a good faith and a show, because they have, they have bills to pay too and everything else? Or is that a complete weird scenario that can't happen with CMAC funding or anything to that nature?
I, I don't know and I'd have to, I would have to look at the contract and I'd have to talk to Dewberry as well. I mean, it's, it's just a really unfortunate thing all the way around. I, I mean, I can see where, you know, the city should have said something way back when, like before, before December. I mean, the conversation should have happened like October of last year. Yeah, the other unfortunate part is just because these, how the construction grants go is you have to take lowest bid. You have to take lowest bid.
And they have a lot of subs.
And they were the lowest bid. And they had a ton of subs. And I think it was really difficult for Vanguard to manage all of those subs. When the, when the project started, what, four months late? They, they, all their subs had already moved on to like other projects. Vanguard had already moved on to other projects. But I think instead of admitting, we don't have everything in place right now, they just kind of piecemealed it and that's what we saw. But that didn't help with our contract and the work efforts with Dewberry because it's not an efficient way of working. Showing up for two hours, showing up for three hours. On the construction side, when you need to have inspectors there and you need to have CM there to do all the documentation, that's not efficient. And so that just happened over and over again. The thing is, that's interesting is Vanguard, when I look at the total costs, they actually didn't go over their cost estimate because we factored in various things. Like when they hit rock, I think we increased it by like 40,000. We did a change order for that, so. And then there was the water line. Those things were all contemplated. So I mean, it is more than what it was out the door, which would be interesting if you could go back in time. But, you know, their argument is, oh, well, we ate a lot too. Which, I mean, that's entirely possible. I can't imagine that they didn't. But I'm not on the hook for their overages. They are.
Right.
I'm only on the hook for the Dewberry overages, which that's, that's what I'm stuck with at the moment. But it was, it was, I think, a comedy of errors in, in many directions, so.
My concern is if we clean this up today, then we're not going to have Dewberry's assistance. We're not going to have any, any threshold to have them help us fight the battle that we're going to have to fight with Vanguard.
Well, we have to, no.
Different city, different contract though.
Different, totally different.
No.
It's, it's not. And, and the conversations that I've had with Dewberry management is they are committed to helping us get through this. So I have to trust that they're going to help us get through this. We have a multi-year contract with them.
So, so I will make a motion then to, it's CMAC funding, it's there. I will make a motion to spend 173...
And then you have public comment.
Oh, yeah, public comment.
Sorry.
Can I have some public comment? Any other questions? All right, slide it. I'll get it one second.
It was like a cross.
Okay.
Sorry.
So is there any other council question, staff question at the moment? All right, let's open up public comment. Anybody out there on the floor want to public comment on this? Troy?
Al, please, Troy.
Well, they almost destroyed my truck a couple times. It's pretty crappy on the road.
Anybody online?
Any online public comment for item E?
Okay. Bring it back to council and I will make a motion to approve, let me have it down here, approve the contract, Resolution 2280. Not getting a second. Resolution 2280 dies. Anybody else want to make a motion to?
I have a question about the total amount. So I know you said that they're not charging us for phone conversations, but I just have a hard time, basically, I look at it as a business. So I'm having a hard time paying my employees full wages for mistakes that they've made, that they've recognized, oh, you know, whatever. So is there a way that we can, you know, save 20% or do some kind of, I just, I just have a hard time paying the full amount. So I, you know, there has to be some kind of understanding that there is a fault with all parties involved, right? We've recognized that we have a fault also, but why are we paying full price? Right? If I go to a car dealer and I say, oh, there's a big huge scratch on this car, I'm going to get a deduction for that. So that's where I'm coming from, is there's got to be some kind of financial recognition that you just don't get paid in full every time you just do a crappy job.
So that was my comment too. So I feel like Dewberry has to absorb some of this for ownership.
Yeah, it's an ownership thing. I mean, that's kind of how I feel too.
And are we looking for them to also absorb some of the Vanguard?
I think you have to keep it separate.
No, that's what I, that's what I was saying, they're tied together because...
But they did a poor job policing Vanguard. They did a poor job of inspecting them.
What they were hired to do, I don't see as the city, if we hired them to be the overseers of it, I don't see why the city has to pay full price for that.
So now that we're talking about something different...
Rebecca, can you tell us, you've negotiated this. You have kind of beat this dead horse with them. You, do you feel that you have gotten these numbers as, I'm going to say beat up? Do you feel that you have exhausted all measures to have, or is this just simply bill time and this is what we, this CMAC funding is available, so this looked good? You know what I'm saying?
The recommendation is right there.
Right, but how much effort? Effort, me, a lot.
Yeah.
I've had a ton of discussions with Dewberry management on this and, and it took a long time to get to this point. I wasn't comfortable bringing this forward for a myriad of reasons, but I wanted to kind of get everything out that needed to get out before we brought it forward. There was a considerable amount of work that needed to go into this to move grant funding for CMAC from construction to CM. That took quite a while to get that done. So I wasn't comfortable at all even bringing this forward if I can't guarantee we're going to get grant funding to pay for it. Because I don't want to approve, you know, the, the additional 209,000 and then find out we only have 100,000 that we can get from CMAC because then I have to find local funding for the other portion of it. The missing link here is the portion is going to be the shortfall related to the Vanguard final, which is being discussed. And that's really all I can say, is it's, it's being discussed.
In its own separate thing.
And it's its own separate, separate thing.
Right.
I, I will say, in talking to Dewberry, they did try to go back and make sure that we were getting charged lesser on short days where they could. But they had staff that they, the staff showed up, they had to pay them. Part of the issue is the, the contractor would contact the inspector and say, okay, we're going to be there and they would show up and they wouldn't be there. But that's because the sub didn't get the message from Vanguard. That you don't, that, oh, never mind, you don't need to be there. There just was this like huge lack of communication on the Vanguard side and I think it really had you with the number of subs that they were using and that it just wasn't, this project wasn't their number one priority to get done. So...
So the only problem with that is that, that this is what I do, right? I, I'm a project manager, so this would happen once and then I would corral God and everybody and I would get control of it in a minute so that it never happened again. And I wouldn't let it go to 238 days over, you know. It's just grossly mismanaged and...
It almost feels like we're being taken advantage of.
Yeah.
I know, but having, I agree, and that's what we're all saying, but having said that, we have CMAC funding for it.
Right.
So it's almost like it's an abuse of funds.
Where do we go from here?
Where do we go from here?
This is now, the motion's died and then somebody else wants to make a motion for a moment. Or do I open back, public comment again?
Is also here.
Right.
Do we have questions for Rebecca, anybody?
So do I open up questions to Rebecca or does anybody have any public comment or does?
Or maybe I'll just open it up for the public comment.
I mean, something like if you have, if you have a service call and, and the guy shows up to your house and you're not there, he's going to charge you 150 bucks for the service call. You go, oh, I wasn't there. So he comes back the next time and he charges you another 150 bucks because you're not there. I mean, it's almost as if Dewberry should be charging Vanguard.
Right, but if that's not in the contract, then that's not in the contract.
So, does anybody have any questions for Rebecca?
Dewberry does charge Vanguard is through the section on Vanguard's contract that says those working days being increased if it causes increases on the engineering, the superintendence and the inspection costs, which it did. And Vanguard's argument is too bad, so sad. But that's where that conversation is continuing to go. All I know is that, you know, we've, you know, Dewberry has spent, I mean, I don't even know how many hours trying to go back through every invoice to try to shave off or, you know, double check or document, you know, make sure they have documentation for all this information. This is where, this is where we got to.
So how much has been shaved off? That was my question.
I don't know.
Do we, I mean, was it, I can't guess it.
So it just sounds like Dewberry, I mean, it sounds like Dewberry and Rebecca, I mean, you guys have gone over this, I don't know how many meetings you've had.
I know, how many hours?
Multiple meetings, how many hours? Yeah, I don't know what else you can keep.
Over and over and over and over again.
So, does anybody have any questions for Rebecca? And is there, then we'll open up public comment real quick.
I'd like Rebecca to answer. I mean, we're talking about like how much has been shaved off. Can you give us an idea of how much you feel that you have absorbed? Can you give us an idea of how much you feel that you have absorbed? So that we're not left holding the entire?
Yeah, I would say thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, really. My time was never federally reimbursable, so I never charged my time since I started working on this project. So, but I will say, you know, our burn rate on invoices. I mean, we were billing for CM time sixty thousand, sixty thousand, forty-nine thousand. And as our budget was dropping, thirty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand. So our time, we were short billing. Our team wasn't filling all of their time because of this looming. We were over and we can't keep making that over number bigger. So we've been short billing on this project since this thing started going over four or five months ago. And I will say, you know, that the team that we had on this project wasn't the B team. This was the A team, construction management crew. And Rebecca was on a lot of the calls when we had the weekly working day calls with Vanguard. When are you gonna get this, when you get that taken care of? I mean, there's items that we're talking about month after week after week. That they, oh yeah, we'll get to it, oh yeah, we'll get to it. And then it wasn't happening, so.
So financially, do you have leverage against Vanguard?
No, we don't.
We have leverage against Vanguard for what we have to pay that, yes?
And it's being withheld, so they're not getting that money right now.
That's the retention.
Yeah.
We haven't paid Vanguard any.
Yeah, that's gonna.
Any other questions for Rebecca? Thank you.
The only comment that I want to make is I, moving forward, right? In retrospect, hindsight's twenty-twenty, but in the future, I feel like what's part of frustrating, and maybe this is how you're feeling, Gretel, is that it got to that amount and we never knew anything about it. So and like you said, had we have stopped the project and that's on us. But moving forward, if we're, and I hope that this never happens again. I trust that it won't happen again. But should it, I'd rather come to us when you're, you know, ten days and ten thousand dollars over versus two hundred thousand.
And then, and then just to.
So we can make that choice.
Just to, just to complicate the conversation even more.
Already complicated things.
There was a, there was a turnover in staff.
And staff, so that's exactly what we were dealing with.
With, with here, as well as with Dewberry. So who had been originally dealing with the project went out. Rebecca comes on, she's trying to, you know, figure out like who's on first and what's on second. So by the time she kind of starts pulling all the pieces together, that's when she runs in my office and says, oh my gosh. Because it's already gone, it's way past.
I think it started off on the wrong foot.
But it was on, it started in a bad way.
Oh yeah, it was procured improperly, right?
Completely procured incorrectly. And I can remember calling previous, yeah, so.
There was a lot.
Yeah.
I'm just making that comment. That's what feels frustrating about it, is that we had no idea. Which I understand that that's because there was a lot going on. But moving forward, like I said, I trust this isn't gonna happen again. Don't want it to ever happen again. But should we even get close to something like this happening again? I'd rather hear about it than two hundred thousand dollars later, oh, what?
And, and yes, and my concern at the time that this, when it first came up, I think it was a hundred and seventy or, I forget. When you had come to my, when we finally found where all the pieces were, it was gonna be all our costs. Because there was no more C-MAC funding left for CM. And so that's where, no way I'm coming to council at that moment to say we need to shore this up with local funds. So that's where it's having conversations with the granting agency to say, what can we do to start moving, moving grant funds from this bucket to this bucket so we can shore that piece up? And then let's get to the bottom line of what is the number we're really looking at? Because is it this or is it this? Is it somewhere in the middle? We needed to get all of the invoices in from both sides to try to identify where we're standing at that, you know. So when I come to you, I have exactly what the number of are. I have exactly where the funding sources are gonna be. Because prior, it was still moving.
And I, and I do want to acknowledge you for that. That, that heavy lifting and all that behind the scenes to make the funding match the case, kudos to you. And kudos to Rebecca if she was involved in helping it. Because honestly, that's, that's half the battle. And you're right. And Michelle, thank you. And Rose, I'm sure you heard.
Full money from another.
Yeah.
It's from the same.
From the same source.
It's from the same source. So the, the project had four different funding sources. So those were all identified. So at the end of the day, we were gonna have, if, if everything had gone perfect, right? We would have had leftover funds.
That we could have used somewhere else.
No, not C-MAC. She said that they did, they did budget out farther for that. C-MAC, we wouldn't have. There, there wasn't.
We just read that one.
Yeah. So that, that we wouldn't have. So another project's not gonna be shorted.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to make sure too. Because it's like, okay, it's fine that we're pulling that out of that funding, but what is not gonna get done now?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, does somebody wants to make a motion? Move on.
Can we put in contracts for the future? That if Vanguard causes Dewberry problems, that Vanguard is responsible for the overage?
Well, that's in the contract.
Now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But that's our, that's our dog to fight with Vanguard, not with Dew.
Right.
We're in contract with Vanguard, they're not, they're in contract with us. Sorry.
So I think we do.
We need to resolve this.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I'll, what I'll do is bring Alvin's motion back onto the table, that we need to make this go away. It's, I think we've all said our piece. I think that there's, it's.
It's a lie.
The dog needs to lie. So, yeah. So my motion is to approve resolution twenty-two eighty, amending the contract and then allowing you guys to do your job.
One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same time?
Gretel? Gretel, she did.
Yeah, she said aye.
Thank you.
I wasn't looking, I'm sorry.
I know, it was painful, but yeah.
All right.
Never again.
Eight S. Approve the relinquishment agreement for the state Route forty-nine sidewalks through the Department of Transportation, Caltrans and the City of Angels. Rebecca?
Okay, so these are the State Route forty-nine sidewalk projects that Caltrans did. So anytime Caltrans does a project on the state routes, when they're done, they want to relinquish it up to the cities. So they're not charging them anymore. One of the questions that had come up in the course of going through this is there's no landscaping currently in there? And I guess like way back when, there had been conversation about landscaping being included in that project, but it didn't make the cut on the Caltrans side. So the landscaping will be happening in a future project.
Okay.
So all this is, is us basically acknowledging that we will accept responsibility for that section and, I think?
Questions?
Caltrans is putting in the.
It's a project that, yeah.
Yeah, remember it got put into a different project like twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six.
Are there, is there talk of water going?
So they gave us three elevations, like three options. The planning commission went through, because they have a landscaping committee through planning commission, and they selected the option that kind of most looks like angels. I did ask Caltrans if they had a drought resistant option where there's like nothing growing at all, and they don't. So that's not one of the options. So there will be some, there will be some vegetation, but it seems like it's kind of drought resistant-ish.
Tolerant. Well, everything can get to that point, but it still has to be cared for, at least in the first or second year. So if there isn't water in the first or second year, you're gonna put it in there and it's gonna die. I've seen it over and over and over.
It was in the plan to have it in there before it gets planted. It's, yeah.
Well, landscaping, that landscaping needs better.
Yeah, I did ask if they have any, just like park and twigs or something.
Right.
Yeah.
That wasn't.
That doesn't look very pretty either. Sand, sand.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Rocks, big cobbles, yeah, yeah. Any public comment in the house? Rose online?
No.
Okay.
All right, a bunch of people.
I know. Um, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Call it, paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove sometime? Eight G, discussion and approval of the city administrators to submit projects on behalf of the City of Angels to be evaluated for the small community drought relief program and approve resolution twenty-two eighty-one, storage tank project, and resolution twenty-two eighty-two, smart meter upgrade.
Okay, let's talk about something fun. So the, the state has put together a small community drought relief program. Normally, they will focus on programs for more urban. So that would be three thousand customers or more. We are small because we are under that number. So this is a pretty straightforward grant application. I always advocate for planning documents because it makes it a lot easier for us to just grab something off a plan, align it with grant funding and move forward. And then that way, it's already been vetted by council and the public and everything. So the water master plan that was done several years ago, a lot of the components still apply today. So I had to go through that master plan and identify projects that we haven't done yet that would align with drought relief. So I think back to when the flume burnt, which isn't a drought, but at the same time, it did cause a water impact to the residents and the businesses of the city. And so we didn't have very much storage here. And so they were looking, the city was looking at water from the Miller Schmar mine. And then in addition, they were looking to a cement plant slurry line to pump water from San Andreas to Ross reservoir. And then they also looked at drilling a well. And the well drilling is contemplated in the, in the master plan. But in terms of viable project, viable projects that we would qualify for in the competitive, in the application program, these were the two. So one is storage and the other one is the automated meters, smart meters, automated meter reading. The other thing is there is a push at the state level to start actually requiring water suppliers to have automated meters, meters in place. Because they want to utilize that as a mechanism to.
Detect the leak.
Detect leaks. Some of those water, water meters, the AMI and AMR meters can actually have.
Regulators, how much water you use.
They can restrict, they can restrict water.
No flushing that toilet.
Yeah, so there's a lot more things that you can do and not have to physically visit the meter. All of that costs money, but there are things that you can do. So right now, if you have a leak, you're gonna find out about it when your water bill comes a month after you've had the leak. And then you do offer a leak adjustment as long as you fix the issue. But meanwhile, you've had a leak. So this gives people the opportunity to kind of watch their own consumption, which does help people in conserving. Sometimes we'll get calls and they'll say, there's no way I used that much water. Well, if they could actually see how much water they were using, they would probably realize that actually is how much water they use. And then the, the storage is a one point four million gallon storage tank. So these two, on the third page, these are just cut right out of our master plan. Dewberry had put this master plan together and the cost associated with it. Our engineer put this together with regards to the water and wastewater master plans. And he did include a, an inflator on the costs because you just never know when you're gonna have money to make this happen. So there is sufficient inflation in here that we should be able to get to cover the costs. And then on the next page, it talks about the meter system upgrade in terms of the number of meters, the different types of meters that would be in here. And so that just gives you an idea of what those two projects are. And that's directly out of the, the water master plan. So the water storage chain is estimated to be just a little over three point three million. And the AMR, AMI project is estimated to be just under one point three million. They don't require matching, but they do say if the cost exceeds the grant requested, the city would have to identify additional funds for the difference, which I think these should be sufficient theoretically. You just never know what materials cost right now. But if, if it is, the line of share would still be paid for with the grant. And then we have to identify water funds for the remainder. The additional components of the application is just the cover sheet, the applicant's representatives and the summary of the project costs. It's a pretty straightforward application. Probably the simplest application.
Order it just goes to the sea.
Then you're gonna ask for four point five million, basically, between the two projects?
Mm-hmm.
And then do you put it out to bid or who is doing the actual work?
So I would send this, this is just the application for the grant.
Right.
So we would send it out, I would send this out tomorrow to the, to the, the granting agency. And then they review them. And then they would tell us if we, you know, get one, get both. And then if they do, then I would bring it back to council. We would go ahead and amend the budget. I would get requests to put bid documents out, coordinating with Dewberry to help me put that information together. We would do an RFP for both projects. And then we would ultimately come back to council to award the contract and then move to, move to the project.
And then we move to the maintenance of these. Because if we're the brand new owner of a storage tank and some really nice fancy meters, we have to maintain them.
Right, what's the ongoing cost?
What's the, yeah.
The meter, like with the meters, same as what they are today. The only difference is the, there's a battery. And so there's batteries in the meters. I can't remember what the lifespan on those are, it's several years. And then.
Is there cellular?
There's the network, which they generally use cellular cards. And then assuming if there's no, if there's power not readily available, there's some solar that has to go into those.
And then we have to, when we have new meter hookups happening, we have to use the new meters. So we have to start, what, inventorying new meters and incorporating. So we just have to adapt to the new stuff.
Buy meters, yeah. Instead of buying the manual reed meters, we would buy the smart meters.
And what's the lifespan of the storage tank? Do you know, is that in here?
No, years and years and years.
And so is this essentially going to save on staff time because they're not reading? So we can use that funds to keep the meters if we need or whatever, right?
Well, then we can have more focus on dealing with the leaks that we have in our system, on the water end, on the sewer side. Right now, they're just kind of running, you know, place to place. If you notice, and I just didn't, I didn't cut it off, but on the page right underneath the project cost for the meter system upgrade, there's table ten point nine, and that was a leak detection survey. That didn't get done, and I'm not asking for that in here. But we are, I am working with the Polywork superintendent to identify leak detection equipment. We have brought in the state to come in and help us do some leak detection. And so we have the staff get trained on some of the leak detection equipment. And so the benefit is instead of thinking nowhere it's at and digging, like potholing, that it's somehow you can hear it. And, yeah, the guys were just so excited about it because you hear exactly where the leak's at. So that means that they are efficiently digging exactly where they need to dig. And that means that they'll have a more staff time and the, the tools that they need in order to identify the leaks and get them fixed. Nice.
I got a question. On the smart meters, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand. And then it says total construction cost. Is that for the manpower to go change those meters out or what is that? I'm just wondering, is there manpower to go change these, all these meters? If that's, that's the construction cost, is the million dollars? That's the construction cost, is the million dollars to change them out?
It's, it's to put the, it's to put the network up, to put all of those, um, because you have to either identify existing holes.
Right, because I see hardware, software, network transceiver, backhaul, training.
Yeah.
And then so the construction cost is the...
And then you have to go to every single meter.
And change everyone out.
And so, what you'll find is depending on the age of the meter, it may not just be a swap in, swap out.
But, a little bit of involved, yeah.
It's a, it's a whole nother thing.
Old galvanized pipe, yeah, all sorts of fun stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that construction, the total construction cost then is the cost to replace those meters?
With the, with the network and the, and the installation, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, in, in, eventually, you know, if we get, if we get this and we get into, you know, contract negotiation, sometimes a bidder will say, "Well, if you let me keep the scrap," you know, they'll...
Right, the brass valve.
They'll, they'll take that, um, or, or we keep it, you know, we can take the scrap and then we can, um, because it's not just the brass valves, it's the meters themselves is more metal, so, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna get a whole pile of meters and the technology to do it, but don't have...
And our guys having to go do it.
Don't have the million dollars to go do it.
No.
And then on the storage tank, is there an actual site located for the storage tank?
There is in the master plan.
There isn't, so is, okay, is that towards the end of town? Or...
It's, uh, towards...
There was multiple, I thought, wasn't there?
There is, but not the, we're not, we're not looking at the runner hill one.
Not looking at the runner hill one, okay. That's the only questions I have. Yeah, it's over there.
Can I get over there?
I'm navigational and challenged.
It's towards the end, yeah.
It's like through behind you.
Okay, any other questions from up front here?
No.
In the audience, public comment? Rose online?
Awesome, fun stuff.
None on them.
A quickie question. Uh, what kind of tank is it? Is it a plastic tank, metal tank, or?
Be a metal tank.
It would be a metal tank.
Metal tank for me. Any other quickie questions? Public comment closed. I would look for a motion to adopt 2282 and 2281 to let Rebecca go after a couple grants.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Here's a lot of it grabbed. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I disapprove sometime? I don't know. Okay. Eight H, discussion and direction on prioritizing of code compliance and current load case. Rebecca?
Um, okay, so, uh, we had Irma come out on November 15th, um, we had the joint, um, meeting between city council and planning commission. Um, a lot of what that did is what, why, and how for code compliance. Um, there were a couple, uh, before and after pictures that related to our jurisdiction that I thought it was important to give, um, council an idea of what are, what do we currently have in our, um, case load? Um, because it's, it's, I think that's important to understand, um, where, uh, where we're at. So, when we went live with our website, we had the community portal up there, we advertised it, you can use it, um, staff have been really good at letting people know, um, that it's available, and you can go on there and have a billing question, or you wanna, uh, report a code, you know, issue, or, uh, whatever it is. And so, um, we immediately, that was the first, that really was the first usage, um, and I think we got our first code request on day one, as soon as we went live. Um, so, it is probably the most active section, um, in terms of, um, people using that portal. So, um, some of the cases that we get, um, we, we push them straight over to PD because they are police, um, related. Um, some of them are just, uh, you know, well, it's not really a code issue, you know, here's the, here's the ordinance, here's why it's okay, or whatever. Some of the things, um, Amy has been able to respond because it's been a planning, you know, planning land use issue, um, that just needed to be clarified. And then, um, other ones have been on the plate for Irma and staff. So, the city currently has 22 open complaints. One complaint involves neon signs. Nine, uh, involve garbage, waste, and trash that's visible, so just kind of, um, just, and it's not a little bit, it's, it's a lot of just stump debris and, um, trash and, and big bulky things in people's front yards. Three regarded cockroach infestation impacting neighbors. Um, that's all related to one property, but three people complained.
Oh, wow.
Uh, two have to do with inoperable vehicles. Three, um, were involving homeless, uh, camping. One was with regards to water theft. One was, um, making a complaint about mandated parking being used for sales displays. One is a property condemnation that we actually opened ourselves because we had a fire in a home. And then, um, one was a question, and it's a, it's a property owner that their neighbor has two Reynolds and one single family resident, so she's asking if that's permitted. So, those are all of the open cases that we have. And so, you know, I think what's important is just kind of putting everything in context. So, we have, you know, a neon sign complaint, so it's on the list, but in terms of health and safety, you can see, you know, garbage, waste, and trash, the cockroach infestation, the homeless camping, water theft, and property condemnation probably rise to a higher level in terms of dealing with them. And just to kind of give you, just put this in perspective, so we had a property recently that, um, just garbage everywhere, and, um, cus, our resident, um, neighbors were complaining. The property was on the market, so how are you gonna sell it if it just looks horrible? Um, and we had a, um, realtor that was working with Irma and staff constantly, that, you know, honestly trying to go out, find someone to come, to haul everything away, um, coordinating that whole side. So, the, the property owner's realtor did, did the heavy lifting of getting all this done, and it took no less than a month to get it picked up. And that's with people who actually want to do it, um, and who can afford to do it. Okay? And so, that was three visits from, um, from code compliance, 10-plus emails. And again, it was successful because the real estate agent really wanted to get the sale. And so, she was very, very, very active in making that work. So, we, you know, when you look at the list, we've got 12 distinct properties that have a very similar type of issue, and I would say in a best-case scenario, those 12 distinct properties would take us six to 10 months to get them completely corrected because you can't, you know, it's like Irma's here one day a week. So, it's not like she can deal with all 12 on one day because you're having to go out to site visits, you have to document everything, then you have to reach out to them. Um, it's a long process, and so, any of those properties that either have limited resources to actually do it, um, or they just don't want to, um, those are gonna take even longer because, you know, code compliance is not a swift hammer. It's a very long process because it's people's property rights, so they have a very lengthy administrative process that we have to follow, um, that really always airs on the side of the property owner. So, um, you know, in looking at that, in kind of looking at the neon signs, um, we clearly have some ambiguity in our, um, our ordinances that deal with signs, whether it's historical or non-historical area. Um, we have a lot of conflicts in our existing code. Um, we kind of did a cursory look of how many neon signs we have, we have 40 in the, in the city. So, um, and this kind of goes back to, you know, the conversation that we had with Irma of you can't subjectively place, you, you can't just pinpoint that one property and let the other 39 go forth or be free with your neon signs. So, um, I would say, you know, any of these things, it's not that we're ignoring it, it's that there's probably a bigger issue that is gonna take more time for us to resolve, um, or there are other more pressing, you know, issues and concerns. But, we just wanna make sure that we're doing what you want us to be doing in terms of prioritizing. In terms of, you know, some of the things that I, I want to bring forward, we don't have a water, um, that should say tampering, not tapering, sorry. Uh, we don't have a water tampering policy, and so, there's really no, like, you wanna cut your meter off, you know, you wanna cut your lock off, you wanna steal water, there's not really, um, any heavy-duty repercussions for doing that. And so, we, um, no one's gonna prosecute, you know, the issue, it would be a misdemeanor at most. Um, there, it does, uh, fall under penal code, but there's, there's not, we don't have anything in place. So, the state actually, state legislature did approve a water tampering, um, law, um, but we have to adopt it. So, that'll be something that I will re-bring to council, and the fines are hefty. If I was ever thinking of stealing water or, um, tampering with my meter, I would probably think twice about doing that. Those are the types of things that we need to put into place so people don't do it. Um, right now, there's nothing to disincentivize people from doing that, so we are dealing with that quite a bit. Um, you know, the, the, um, public camping, you know, we probably do need to have, um, some restrictions on camping in public spaces and where that can and where that can't happen. However, we have to work with the county. We have to work with the county. So, um, we have to have somewhere for, um, those unhoused to go. It's not enough that we pass a, uh, a, um, ordinance that says you cannot be within, you cannot camp within 500 feet from, from a school. It, it wouldn't be, um, it, it, it wouldn't be enforceable because there's nowhere else for them to go. So, I'm, um, working with the county. We need to come up with a plan. We need to come up with, um, an agreement between the city and the county in terms of what this process is gonna look like, um, what we can do as a city, and what the county needs to do as the county. So, those are things that we are working on, but again, they're gonna, that one in particular is gonna take some time because the county overall lacks, um, unhoused housing. So, um, but I just wanted to bring this forward to council just because we get a lot of calls. We have a restricted budget for code compliance. Um, we talked at the meeting on the 15th about making sure we're really focusing on health and safety-type issues, but I do get calls, um, regarding issues that are not health and safety, they're more of, um, aesthetics or a, you know, sign issue or a, it's not aesthetically pleasing to the particular area that it's at. Um, and it's just, I'm not comfortable putting resources on it if that's not the direction of council. If you guys wanna go that direction, I'm more than happy to put resources on it, but otherwise, I just want you to collectively agree to what you want us to do, which you don't have to do right now.
Questions?
Health and safety.
Yeah, health and safety.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were all on that page. And the thing that, the thing that I've walked away with on the 15th is that it's clear that Irma's, Irma's one man.
Yep.
And right here, if you look at your, um, in 30 days of complaints, you've received, we've received, um, the 22, 22 of which it took 30 days or what, so you're anticipating that it'd be six to 10 months to get all these cleaned up, and that's only 30 days' worth of complaints. So, we're gonna have another 30 days with the complaints, and another, it's just perpetual, we're gonna... And so, Irma's one person.
Yes.
One day a week.
One day a week. So, we need to utilize her in the smartest way, like you're saying. We need to utilize her to, definitely, my goal would be to be proactive and not reactive. As much as I can appreciate all of these complaints, um, some of them are valid, some of them are all kind of relative to each other, like you said, but if we can get Irma out there just knocking down doors one day a week and, and doing, uh, certain streets by alphabet, I don't care how she does it, but not to be selective, but to go out and do a zone or an area or alphabetize the streets and say, "I'm doing A's and C's today," and gonna do, I don't know.
Just do areas.
Do something. Do, you can't say neighborhoods, but do something to be as proactive as possible, and then she'll have her work cut out for her, but it's gonna, it's gonna come down to staff to be her support so that we don't lose that time clock that's gonna start ticking.
Yeah. And I would also say, um, you know, the, like, for the signs. It's, it's our ordinances.
Yeah.
You know, with you guys, your predecessors or their predecessors improved it, ordinances can be changed, um, and it may have made sense how it was then, but it may not make old sense today. Um, and so, those are things that it's, you know, then you kind of have to stand back and go, "Okay, well, let's say we had all this other stuff cleaned up, is it really an enforcement or is it a policy change?" And those are conversations that we'll have to have as time goes on, um, because just in comparing the two signs and billboards, chapter 15, and historical commercial district signs, chapter 17?
There's conflict.
There's conflict.
Yes.
And, and we really haven't been enforcing them, um, as it is for several years, so it would be really hard to sit there and try to enforce it now, and I don't know if it necessarily means enforcement or, like I said, if it means it's really probably more of a policy change. You guys, you guys decide policy, um, and just because the policy is there today doesn't mean that that's the same policy that you wanna continue going forward. And then as we, uh, have time to, uh, to bring those things forward, to have those conversations, we can certainly do that, but for purposes of, uh, enforcement, I think it's identifying really the true health and safety issues.
I mean, nine on garbage and one on neon sign. I guess we can also look at the trends and keep an eye on that and see over time because we're, there's nothing we can do about the budget this year, but look at it, and if there's, you know, 22 neon sign complaints, um, then maybe it's something to look at, but we have, we have one right now.
And who, who, as far as the complaints go, I mean, does Irma come in for an eight-hour day and she spends four hours at online reading complaints? Or who, who gets the complaint? I wanna know how this is fit.
We have, so we have a very organized sheet of all of the active complaints, and, um, and so, they get assigned to whatever respective department. So, if it's a, if it really needs to go to police, they get it. If it's truly a code issue, then it will be under Irma's purview, but internally, staff can look at that and go, "Oh, this is just a..."
Just like the other one we did last week, I know.
This is just a letter.
Yeah.
This is just a, and so, the, and some of this is training too, because Irma is helping to train internal staff in terms of, you know, what that...
Recognizing.
Initial letter needs to look like, and, and, and some of this is why we, um, is why we came forward with the software for, um, uh, building and planning because there's that code compliance effort in there, which then kind of helps with automated outreach in there too. So, that's kind of all gonna work through itself. So, right now, we have, it comes through the website, or it's a phone call, or someone drops off a form. If it comes through the phone or, um, or, uh, phone or form, staff will enter it into the web form, just like they were on the website, and then it goes in there. So, then it's all clear what the, what the event date was, what the issues are, who the contact, um, is, and then they will sit there. So, we don't lose track of them, but they're just gonna sit there. And then Irma will really focus on the, you know, kind of the, the issues that are more prominent, um, that we're getting, you know, like the garbage, the visible light that is, is happening, kind of going back to that broken window theory.
But, that is all still complaint-driven.
It's all complaints.
So, are we, are we agreeing that we want Irma to break out of the office and not just look at complaints and start driving around the neighborhoods?
So, I'll throw in my two cents, 'cause I was gonna go up next. So, for me, public safety and theft would be my top two to look at, and then you said this, a mendigo to have Irma driving around neighborhood to neighborhood and sections?
Somehow, yeah.
I'm totally against that at the moment, 100%. I still think we're complaint-driven. I still think we're complaint-driven. The amount of time and money for Irma to spend and staff to spend on that would be huge. Every place in Angels Camp, my house, you drive by could be a code violation, I guarantee it. Well, I'm just saying, I'll throw myself under the bus. I'm not, I'm not willing to do that and spend that type of money at the moment when there's a lot of more important things, I think, that could be spent on. I am only about complaint-driven. So there's my two cents.
I think we can do some better outreach about that.
Right.
For sure, letting the public know that there's this form online that they can fill out.
The reason that I'm not a person that likes the complaint-driven form is because that is making members of the public be proficient in our, in our codes. And I'm not proficient in our codes. You're, I'm probably in violation of something just like you said too. But I don't know it until I'm told it. So the complaint-driven scenario is expecting people that are untrained to be the officers.
Isn't that part of staff, though? They're the ones that are sifting through.
We're sifting through. This is just the, these are the open complaints, but there's been other ones through. I'm all, this isn't anything. And it's not, it's not, you know.
But Irma driving around.
Or that complaint, or the complaint-driven may bring something to light that we do need to make a code on.
Sure, but Irma driving around could simply be like, "Hey, guys, I see, what we're seeing a lot out there is a lot of garbage, waste, and trash that's visible. I don't need nine more complaints to come in. I can tell you that we have these problems." And that might warrant a letter that goes out or an email that goes out and say, "Did you know that it's, we have an ordinance against parking an RV under a tree on a sunny day?" I don't know, I don't know what the ordinance is. But some sort of outreach that needs to come from Irma to say, "This is what's going on." Before, before we do the proactiveness, but we have to start being proactive or we're just going to chase this, we're going to be behind it, and we're never going to catch up.
Well, if you fix, if you fix the areas that we have right now, everyone starts to kind of follow suit.
Right.
If you're, if you, if you live on a street, and, and I'll tell you right now, the complaints with regards to garbage, waste, and trash, they tend to be in the same area. It's on the same street. So, so what happens is if you force all of them to start cleaning it up, then the sixth neighbor isn't going to start. They're not going to start doing it because they're watching every, and it becomes more evident that it's a problem.
Right.
So, and I would say, we've got a big enough backlog as it is that this is going to keep her busy for a while, sifting through all of this. And more are coming in. I'm sure, I didn't, I didn't, I wrote this last week.
There's more since then, yeah.
And so since then, I can guarantee we have more. But I think driving around when, when she's in here one day a week, I don't think it's... And there's, there's, there's research on every single one. It's, it's so like, she could go in five, five properties. She's got to research who owns the property, who's living in the property. What, there, it's not just a quick, like, go knock on the door and, "Hey, here's a post-it note and you're, you know, you're out of compliance." We have to identify, what is the code that they're out of compliance on? Who do we actually need to talk to? Do we need to talk to the person that's living there? Do we need to talk to the property owner? Maybe it's not the property owner that's there, maybe they're renting. So you have to keep going through who your actual contact is. The property owner may have no idea that there's trash coming out of the windows.
I also think, I understand you're wanting to be proactive in putting her out there and driving around, but I feel like that's an inefficient way of, or use of her time. But at the same time, if she's going out to the street and on her drive, she's noticing that.
If she can, you know, take note of that, then obviously that's going to be a lot more efficient. But I think just telling her to go drive around neighborhoods is not the best use of her time.
Amy's up there too, she's got something.
So you guys brilliantly approved a new software for us. And at Irma's recommendation, this particular software has GIS on it. So when we start getting a concentration of complaints in an area, our plan has been that we will then flood that area with education follow-up so that we can find the hotspots based on complaints. And then we will target those first with the outreach and education to maybe focus that proactive approach a little bit.
Because it tends to happen, like, it spreads. So if this person is parking their RV, right?
Or boat that on.
If their RV and their boat, then this one does because he's doing it. And then that one does because they're both doing it. And then all of a sudden, it's an entire street of them. If you've got one property that has trash and their Christmas tree for the last three years is out in the front yard and mattresses and whatever else, they do it. And then two doors down, they're doing it. Because if they can do it and get away with it, so can I. So when you start, you know, addressing these issues, and then, like she said, we're going to see exactly what I'm saying, which is it, it happens all in a particular area. It's always in this, like, it's not like one house sitting in the middle with these pristine little houses. It's the flip-flop. And so then we'll be able to do kind of more of those educational outreaches, which are far more cost-effective. And you'll have far more people that'll just comply because they go, "Oh, sorry, I guess."
Well, and I think if the public recognizes that it is a complaint-driven system, right, then more people will probably start utilizing that. And then that will be helpful because you'll start getting more complaints on the same house or the same area. And then I think that that probably will be so. I think probably the best thing to do is to tell people, "Look, if you notice something, go and make a complaint." And, and so that would be helpful because now you've got the whole town.
Yep.
And so start with that. But definitely, like, health and safety and not waste time on neon signs.
I have one online.
Let's see, any public comment in the audience real quick? Step up to the mic, Furman.
Tyra, we'll get to you in just a moment, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, Furman Brown, regarding the sign codes. Number one, I speak for the Minor Signs, not because I'm involved in the order, but Minor Signs was asked to take down the fabric banner in the old restaurant portion. And it was gold and black, black background with little letters. And it was taken down because we were asked to take it down. Number one, they liked the beer signs, and they were, they were taken down also. We also turned out all the lights on in the street. If you want to see one dead corner in downtown, go look at the Minor Signs corner today with no lights on. I think that if you really have to look at it or really rework it because if we don't change this neon situation, we're going to have one dead town here. And neons are also open signs. And I'd like to clarify, Rebecca said that there was, or Furman said there were 22 complaints on neon? I don't think, no, you already mentioned, but you didn't mention that 22 complaints on neon a minute ago. And I don't think there was.
No, complaints total. One of those 22 neons. Only one neon complaint.
Okay, okay, I missed a bit. It was 22 neons complaints. But if you take a look at, I know another, another status in downtown says, "I've got to get some more light in my business because the day that you drive by, neons make it alive." I don't know how you cut it. And I understand the theater, where would we be without those theater lights? I know they're grandfathered in, but that keeps this town alive. And that's why I think regarding the neon, that's my two bits worth here. Also, we, I look at relationships between the businesses and the city. We are now missing a beautiful Christmas across the thing on this end of town because of relationship regarding the, and we still have railing, I don't know if you would notice. But we also lost a banner that goes across this end of town because of a relationship between a property owner and the city. So we have to maintain a relationship between the businesses and the city, and it's a two-way thing. We have to respect the city, city has to respect the businesses. So, end of report.
Thank you, Furman.
Thank you, Furman.
Anybody else in house?
My name is Olga Vakara, and I wanted to give you guys just an idea. That neon sign, you know, is, I think it says, "It's nothing what we deal with. That property, they look so ugly, so dirty." I mean, we in Angels Camp, the beautiful Angels Camp, the place of the color stormy weather, John Prog. Okay, I think it's, if you guys, just an idea, maybe I'm wrong. But if you guys send a letter to those people that have all the garbage and all the ugly stuff and from the their houses, and give, give them a fine. What's wrong with that? That way, give a little bit of money for the lady, Irma, I don't know, just an idea. But it looks very ugly and very disgusting to live in a town like that. And if you guys announce something in the paper that says, "Okay, from now on, we're going to have a clean Angels Camp." And go from there. Because I want to make a complaint of somebody, two people that live in Bretthard Road, that is very, very ugly place. I mean, it's so gross passing through that street. Okay?
Thank you.
Amy?
Just wanted to give you an update on what the planning commission has directed staff to do. They have reviewed the idea of neon, and they recognize that Arco Deco, obviously, is one of the historic district elements. And they have neon. We will be amending the code and bringing it to you to talk about incorporating neon into signs. Secondly, we do enforcement two ways, complaint-driven. And if somebody applies for a permit, we will not issue a new permit until you are in compliance with the code. We won't issue a permit if you have a code violation. We will condition it that you must go into compliance. So if you have been asked to do something to comply with a permit that we have in fact already issued and explained that you must do this before installing a new sign, then we would be enforcing an existing permit that we have recently issued. So just wanted to ask that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in here?
Tyra, Tyra, go ahead.
Woohoo! First thing I just wanted to clarify, if there was any way we could actually update, I think, and then I believe Olga just kind of spoke on to this, and let people know what the code compliance is? Because I don't even live in Green Horn or Angels Oaks, and I know their CNRs don't allow this, 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 and this. But I don't even know what they are in Angels Camp. And I think that might kind of help alleviate the problem? If there was a way we could let the public know what the code compliance actually is? So that's number one. Number two, did I hear you say, Rebecca, that the two people that continually sleep and camp in the crosswalk across from Bretthard High School is being taken care of? Isn't that some kind of code compliance?
It is, and it's partially unenforceable. So the issue with unhoused or homeless is they, they can legally be on public property. They cannot block public rights of way, so they can't block sidewalks or roads. In the particular case of the, of the ones that you're talking about, they are very careful not to block the sidewalk. So they are staying on the business property, and the business property has not made a complaint. Okay.
Thanks, Tyra.
That's good.
Anybody else online? No. All right, so we will close public comment. Was that enough?
Yep.
Direction? Okay, direction was given to staff.
Public safety, and then I think this is also helpful for the public because we can point them back to this meeting when they have concerns or issues about the...
I think, just telling people, just go on the website and, and I think that's good.
And they can be anonymous now, Chris, we changed that. So Olga, if you have the two concerns that you talked about, you can go online and you can use the system and you can be anonymous.
I went today and I got that information. And I'm going to do it tonight. I even have pictures.
You can open up whatever you want. We know you're not going to be anonymous either.
Before we move on to item I, I say we take a five-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Welcome back. To move on to item I, discussion on quarter one, 22, 23, financials. Rebecca?
Okay, so our intention, I'm putting money, was to bring forward, so when I had started, I was bringing monthly reports to council because you haven't been getting the reports. And so, so now, we're going, we're all caught up. So we're, I'm going to be bringing with Michelle quarterly reports to council, which this one's a little late, but we had a ton of catch-up to do for school year '21 and '22. They are year-end audit, and we have a lot of other things that needed to be cleared up. So moving forward, they will be more timely associated with the quarter periods. So if this, this report is mainly geared towards the general fund, which is the one source of funding that council has the most control over. All of the other funds that we have, for the most part, are restricted in some way, shape, or form. And so first quarter is always kind of a real yawn-er because, unless something like really crazy happened one way or another, there's not, not a lot to discuss. So there's not any super fancy graphs or anything in here because there's not really much to talk about. What I can say is the benchmark for first quarter would be 25%. So we should have spent 25% of our expenditures, and we would, we should have received 25% of our budget and revenue. So overall expenses, and we're talking about general fund, are 18% of budget with salaries and benefits at 19%, services supplies at 20%, and capital outlay at 1%. And the thing to remember on capital outlay, we are just having a heck of a time finding vehicles, equipment, anything that has to do with anything. So we are ordering, it is happening, we just haven't seen anything yet. So it's just taking a really long time. And then overall salaries are lower than budget because we have vacant positions. And so that's, that's where we're at. So we're well below the benchmark of 25%. And so that's, that's good. Overall revenues are 4%, which, you know, you could gasp and say, you know, "Oh, my gosh, we should be at 25%." But the reality is, when we receive the tax revenue, this is where, I have to put on my accounting hat, when we receive our, a majority of our revenue in July, it's really for June. So even though the cash comes in in July, we could do all deposits in July. Some of it is even, we get it in August. It's all really for June. So from a accounting perspective, we accrue it all back to June. So it doesn't get counted in our budget for this year, it goes to last year. So it all gets caught up as the year goes on. And then, but, but kind of silver lining is the reimbursements, our encouragement permits, our building and sign permits, our banners and events revenues, those are all trending anywhere between 60% and 500% of our budget. Now, those aren't like astronomical dollar amounts, but they are trending higher than what had been anticipated. So that's, but it does signify that there's been a lot of activity. And that activity can translate into higher TOT and higher sales tax. Because if you are, you know, doing encouragement permits, if you're doing building and sign permits, it means that you're active, you're moving forward. So, and then banners and events, that means you're having, you know, events that are ultimately going to help people spending money throughout the city. So those are all kind of important markers. And the other thing is property taxes, which is a pretty sizable amount of money that we get. We don't get that until December or January. So I would say, all in all, first quarter is actually strong from a revenue perspective, even though it's only 4% and we should be 25%. But it trends, the trend is in line with all the prior years, where first quarter is always slow because we're getting that money accounting-wise. We have to go back to June. And then, but we are showing higher than trending revenues. So just in terms of like looking forward, just things that just you should be prepared for, just some operational concerns. We have significantly higher energy costs than what we had anticipated. So even though I had anticipated higher energy costs of the budget, it's... it's even beyond that. We are, have obviously increased fuel costs. Again, we still increased it for budget, but it's still surpassing the trends even for what we increased it for budget. And when we talk about supply chain issues, we're seeing that front and center in our chemicals and the materials related for water and wastewater. So that is something that we're keeping an eye on. But you have to buy chemicals and you have to test all your stuff. So those, those are just general overall materials costs. So we'll keep an eye on all that. We will address that at mid-year with potential adjustments for the budget at that time. And then, at the same time, the city has also gotten additional grants that we will also be bringing forward at mid-year, recognizing that additional revenue with the offsetting expenditures. So at this point, there's no budget adjustments that we're asking for. There's no real major concern for operations at this time. It's just these particular areas that we're keeping an eye on. Again, we're still kind of waiting to see how CPPA is gonna bring it all out, which is just ultimately gonna have the MNC even more. But, um, yeah, so.
They're talking about Europe spending 30% of their people's budget on utilities.
On energy.
Energy and feeding their homes and stuff. I mean, 30%, that's huge. At least they have something to fuel their home.
And I would say the benefit that we have going for us as a municipality is our relationship with the CPPA. Because CPPA buys energy through federal sources and that is hydro. And so it's the cheapest energy cost that we can get. If we were to not be part of CPPA, I mean, it would be...
Right, saying for like the fairgrounds, I mean, it would be, you have the high schools.
What are they doing? What are they doing to try to circumvent that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but historically, here and at the county, it never penciled out for us to look at solar. It just never did because we're paying very little for energy costs. But it, it may start making more sense to start looking at some alternative energy sources. There are grants for, for those.
Huge parking lot, solar.
Yeah.
Well, it is going everywhere in Lowdy. I was in Lowdy yesterday, I was shocked at how they're putting it everywhere.
If you think of the property that the city has, that's ours. It's kind of a perfect solar field and kind of potential.
Yeah, but the parking structures are great because when you provide shade in the people's cars, which is huge.
And more marketing. Yeah. So that's it, nothing super exciting, but, um... No bad news.
We have to, we have one more.
Hold on, any public comment out there?
One question.
Step on up, Greg.
One quick question. Was it in the budget to remove the tree that fell down in Gateway Park? Or was it by insurance?
No, it was not. Uh, the, yeah, the wood goes to our spray field lot, so it goes and sits there. No, it was not. That, that was not in the budget. So, uh, we did have budget for trees because we have experienced some falling trees throughout the years. So there's always been a little bit in the budget for that, but no, not, not, not that amount.
Was that a storm related damage?
No, it was a... Best I can tell is that the tree had some issues because what it did is it just split right down the middle, down the base. And so the whole canopy just took up all of Gateway. So it just fell.
A lot of oaks. Is it an oak?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of oaks are splitting and...
It was a, it was a lot of...
Losing big giant limbs and just think like all these years of drought, woodpeckers, like a whole lot of things contribute to that.
Yeah, it was pretty sad. It was a, it was a pretty monumental tree in Gateway.
Any public comment online?
Nope.
Alright, closed public comment. Thank you for the discussion and report. Item J, approved resolution 2282 of the city council.
Eighty-three.
Area 22, what?
Oh, it says eighty-three. Mine says eighty-three.
Oh.
Right, but on the agenda it says eighty-two, so you need to clarify that.
But I'm gonna say we are, let me punch up.
Eighty-two was the smart meter upgrade.
Eighty-two was the smart meter upgrade up here, so this is eighty-three.
Correct, okay.
So we're gonna change up to twenty-two eighty-three of the city council of Angels, beside the fact that the consolidated general election held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, declaring the results and other matters required by law. Rebecca?
Um, decisions stander. Anytime the city has an election, we consolidate the election with the county. And then the county actually has their certification going to their board. So Rebecca was kind enough to send me what is going to their board ahead of time. Otherwise, we'd have to have a special MNC. So that's all this, it's just declaring the results and other matters required by law. Same information to go to the board.
Any staff, council, public, online public? Okay. I'd like to say thank you everybody for running. It's awesome. Hey, it's awesome, thank you everybody. Um, but I'd look for a motion to approve resolution 2283.
I'll make that motion.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May this approve same time. Item... Nine.
Eight. Eight.
Well, is it eight or not?
Administration.
Nine. Yeah, because we were on eight.
Yeah.
What?
Nine, ten.
It's because I have amended it and I didn't put my number, sorry.
Number nine, administration report.
Okay, uh, so we have been watching the weather report, determining if it's going to rain, not rain, might rain, absolutely gonna rain. How much it's gonna rain. And so everyone has finally come to the conclusion it's probably gonna dump.
Which is great, we need the rain.
It just is not conducive to a parade. So there were a lot of factors going into that float.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just, it's just not gonna work out. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna abandon the float because...
What about school bus?
Come on.
If, if you want to, like, if you want to get into a car, you know, and just drive down and wave out the windows, I just need to let Jessica know so she can just make sure you're in the, um, in the rotation of the floats. Um, so I just need to know that if anyone wants to do that, you're more than welcome. If you want to walk in the parade anyway, I just need to know so I can let Jessica know in terms of the order. So I'll, I'll give you a little bit of time tonight to figure, figure that out. If you want to go and walk in the rain or drive a car in the rain, if you can just let me know tomorrow. Let her know.
Light it up.
Light it up.
In a big umbrella, it's kind of like a beach umbrella.
So just let me know tomorrow and then I can, I can reach out to her. Um, so in lieu, so then the thought was, okay, well, you know, they have all these vendors that they sold out this month or so. So they contacted us and so they're looking at an alternative site for all the vendors. So our building staff are going out and fire staff are going out to give them temporary occupancy.
Which building?
It's the, um...
Aldwin.
Rosner.
Rosner, yeah.
So...
The one next to the Mercantile. To the left.
Left, left.
Thank you.
So not where Santa's gonna be?
No, Santa's still in the Mercantile.
Yeah, got it. Um, so that's the plan. Um, so I think it'll still be a great opportunity for people to go downtown, shop, see Santa, support the businesses downtown. It might be a little shorter parade, uh, just because people aren't gonna want to walk in it.
Maybe not even rain.
I...
Right, it could stop.
Sure.
The last time it rained, I was amazed at how many people still came.
Yeah. The Calabars visitors bureau, I think, is coordinating dancing polar bears, which I feel like that, those are kind of waterproof.
Pretty awesome.
Yes, so they're pretty funny to watch if you saw them at the muffy's parade. They're pretty fun. So I think, I think it will be still a good turnout all in all and everyone's trying to just make some accommodations for the weather. But I hope to see as many people as possible out there. Caitlin's last week is this week, so she's with us till Friday. And then we've got staff that are covering her. CSG is also going to have some coverage staff come in specifically for permit technician stuff. So...
But she'll be at the party, the lady party?
Yes.
So we can say good luck.
Did we hire Alicia's spot?
That's Caitlin.
Caitlin.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Caitlin, okay. And we've hired for Caitlin's spot.
Yeah. So we've got plenty of coverage and so we're just wishing her well and excited for her to bring in her little pink bundle of joy. And is there anything else? I think that's it.
Council report, starting over, you and Miss Gretel.
Just parade. There might be some vendors on the porch. But wherever we can find them. So, yeah. Hopefully all of downtown will be open, so. Lots of shops doing little things inside their stores. So even if it's raining and you're dodging and out of shops, you'll, it'll be, it'll be good.
Oh, so make sure you go on the city's website for the hop in shops. We still have...
Oh, yeah.
Are there still some...
We still have O卡 cards available. Um, it's a little different program. It's buy one, get 50%. So if you buy a hundred dollars, you get a fifty-dollar gift card. And those can be used at all of the businesses within the city. We've got just over thirty businesses signed up for it. It's been a really great program. So we still have funds available for that donation side of it. Make great Christmas gifts. You can give the cards away to, um, to your loved ones and friends and family as gifts. So make sure you go on before we sell out.
What do we have left? Just estimate.
Twenty thousand dollars in donation.
Still?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so the second phase didn't sell anywhere near as fast as the first.
No, because everybody wanted buy one, get one.
Yeah, they wanted the one hundred...
Not one for half.
I mean, it's still free money.
It's still a pretty good deal. Yeah, I used my name just today the other day.
Yeah.
Jim?
On the 21st, I attended LAPCA with Isabel. It was a pretty standard round the mill meeting.
It was a recap of the...
Yeah, a recap of still they're working with the CSDs throughout the county to still try to get them compliant and it's just a battle. There was a lot of talk about the national conference that some folks take on to. And Nancy Meese, who was our clerk, retired. So there was a new clerk being appointed and I cannot remember her name. I know. That was it. The, um, on the 22nd, I attended the Bretthard Floral Making.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Me too.
You were that... Yeah, and I just want to say that that's an amazing event every year. I think I've done it forever. It's just a super fun event and way to give back to Bretthard Floral. And you get the ticket, it's your centerpiece for, um, for your holiday. And of course, I attended the city strategic planning with you all folks on the first. And that's it, ready for the holiday party.
The what?
Uh, holiday party.
She was, oh no! I gotta go.
Uh, so I did not attend the last museum meeting because it was December 1st at 10 o'clock and I was here with all you fine folks for that strategic planning. But the museum foundation voted two new board members onto it, Debbie Ponti and Jamie Shot McMurray. And the Firehouse exhibit is almost completed. Uh, they just are waiting on the Plexiglas. I think they were hoping that that would be, um, done before our, uh, party. So I don't, I don't know if that'll be done. But, um, they are doing, uh, they've decided, they're, they're really ramping up their fundraising, which is great. So they are expanding their sponsorship program, but they also did a Giving Tuesday. I don't know if anybody saw that, but it was on social media and through email. And then they are gonna do like a giving campaign in June, it looks like, so. But they raised eleven hundred dollars on Giving Tuesday, so that was great. So, oh, that's the museum. And then tomorrow I have the Central Sierra Economic Development, no, Thursday of Central Sierra Economic Development. I'll be going to COG for you tomorrow. And, um, I don't know how many more committee meetings there are this month. I think it's pretty light.
I attended LAPCA and I went up to Murgens Open House last Friday. Obviously, the strategic plan, um, discussion. And I unfortunately am unable to attend the parade and the party, so call it fun for me.
We will.
We will, for sure.
Send me a picture. I will eat your tri-tip sandwich.
Oh, you're not even gonna be at the party?
The party.
So funny.
I'm hilarious.
I spent more time in this chair this month with between the other day and now.
It's all done.
I never sit, I never sit.
UWPA was canceled for last month, so I didn't have anything there. We have COG tomorrow and UWPA on Tues, next Tuesday.
Next weekend.
Yeah.
Oh, I have one more thing, I forgot. Um, the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District is handing out gift certificates to veterans again this weekend on the 10th and the 11th from 10 o'clock in the morning until four o'clock on both Saturday and Sunday. One hundred dollar gift certificates to Angels Sweet Market.
Where do they go?
Are they?
What, where do they go?
Where do they go?
Is it in the Milton Schoppler Center again?
To the end of Raspberry, so at the vets hall. And it's for veterans only in our districts. For those listening at home, veterans only in our district. So if you live in Copperopolis, Angels Camp, or Vallecito.
Nice.
That's Saturday?
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
Either Sunday, if you want to see me.
Um, the only other thing is the Hop In Shop. I've heard nothing but good things about it, so, um, I think it's going off really well. Thank everybody who's helped put it on and get shops signed up and everybody. Been good.
Is there gonna be, is there a time limit on when that is over as far as...
When the money's out.
The money's out.
Okay.
Correspondence, I think everybody read. Is there anything anybody wants to say, public comment, anything on correspondence? Gone once, twice gone. Rose, you've already sent us calendar, I'm assuming?
Well, so I need to know who's gonna go to the League of City Mayor and Councilmember Academy.
Is that the... No, that's different.
January.
January. Because in order for us to get a discount on the hotel, I need to register you by December 30th.
Give me the dates again.
Uh, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I can go on the...
I'll send you the schedule.
Please send, yeah, so you can see what's on the...
What day you want to go.
One or two days, that would be great.
And then if one of you was able to go the whole time, then we can, um, book your hotel. The other thing too is in January, our Tuesday meeting is right after a holiday, so don't forget. But we also will need to readdress all the committees that you guys are on. Um, and then I'm also gonna be bringing the council calendar because, um, July 4th is a Tuesday, so it's a holiday.
Right.
Um, and then normally we skip, which we are skipping this second December meeting, November is super close to holiday. So December, we may have the two, November, we may just have one. So I'll be bringing all that forward as well.
And that's on January 4th?
It's January 4th. Fourth.
No.
Third.
Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
Tuesday.
And January 1st is Sunday.
Right.
And then I'm gonna be working with Rose to go over all of the committees. Because I think there are potentially some, at least one or two committees, that it just may make more sense to delegate staff to be on them instead of council members. So they'll kind of free up some time for you guys. And then we'll go through the other committees to identify kind of what their purpose is so we can have that discussion in terms of if you want to continue.
And do you have the museum down? It's the first Thursday. It's the first Thursday of the month at ten AM.
That's never really been like it was...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's been pretty solid, so I would say that's when it is, so we can look at that. Um, okay. And what was the thing that you wanted us to attend the training? Is that the same as the...
That eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
That's the eighteen, nineteen, twenty, January. I win.
So I, I would recommend going, um, because if you came in kind of midterm, right? Then that wasn't available. Um, and...
It was on digital for...
And if it was, then if you came in during COVID and you had to do a virtual meeting, you don't get the networking, you don't get to hear the conversations. Sure, but...
Should get the Churchill White President.
Oh, okay.
I got the guy sitting in his gimme pant at the desk. Oh, yeah, straight up. And I got the Stoner.
The Stoner.
Rita Vista.
He had one and he hit, that was his whole logo, was pot smoking something.
City Council.
And he had a sign behind him and everything on his Zoom.
It was amazing.
So, um, it would be beneficial. It would be extremely beneficial to go all three days. It's just, it's a good resource.
I need to know soon as possible.
Okay.
I'll send you the schedules, I'll send you what the outline for, so.
And let me know by tomorrow if anyone wants to drive or walk in the parade, so I can...
And there are a lot of different classes. I mean, there's classes on unfunded liabilities, there's on out of running. I mean, there's everything, there's all sorts of stuff, so.
Yeah, let's wrap it up like a...
Alright, adjournment, make a motion.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May pose same time, five-oh, out of here.
Can I talk to Mayor Vice Mayor?
I, I need you two as well, I need signature.
Can Dee do us the sideknees or are these just for us to eat?
Rose, I can do the nineteenth and twentieth on that, on the League of the Cities. I cannot do the eighteen.
I know.
Wow! You're so...
I was gonna say, get the walk-in.
No, I'm looking at all.